Go ahead. All right, so we'll just move ahead. Oh, there he is. Perfect timing. Changes to the agenda? Any board members request any changes to the agenda? Nope. If not, then we'll move on to the superintendent's report. I'll pass it to you, Marza.
All right. Thanks, Lynda. I am so excited to see people in the audience here tonight. It has been two-plus years, I think, since we've had the opportunity to invite students back to our Board of Education meeting. So we have student presenters that are from first grade and eighth grade, right, Sarah? So Sarah Hickey, who is our instructional coach, has kind of facilitated all of this to happen. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Sarah, and you can introduce the students that you have with you.
Great. I'll go ahead and come up to the podium. So this is our eighth grade artists that are joining us tonight. And they actually put together a really nice presentation to give an overview of the eighth grade component as well as the first grade component and how they really partner together. So I'm going to hand it over to them.
Hi, I'm Rosie Gonzalez, and tonight, Howser, our students and I are going to talk about how we partnered with first graders. (laughter)
Oh.
We went too fast. Okay. We just wanted to thank you for coming out and listening to us. Here are the artists we have tonight. Me, again, Rosie Gonzalez, and I made the video Flying a Kite. Alexi, that made the video Outside Snack. Ava, that made the video Birds, and Max, that made the video Butterfly. Cross curricular means that two subject areas can partner to support one another. It can also offer a real audience for our published work. Today, we are going to look at how eighth graders' art classes partnered with first graders across the district to support literacy instruction. Art is an anchor class at Howser. Some of the projects I completed this year included African masks and still life. My favorite part of art class is improving my art skills, interacting with others, doing something I enjoy, and having fun. The stop-motion animation project covered several art standards. However, the one standard that helped us keep our first-grade audience in mind was select, organize, and design images and words to make visually clear and compelling presentations.
Hi, I'm Alexi, and for the eighth-grade stop-motion animation goals, they were the storyline, the duration, and the animation quality. For storyline, the storyline needed to have a clear beginning, middle, and end. For the duration, it needed to be around three to four seconds, which is about 60 frames of high-quality animation. For animation quality, the animation had to be smooth and fluid. The technique, drawings, and editing were consistent and high-quality. CapCut was a tool we used in our animation projects. The first step was to take photos of all the note cards and put them in order to create the actual animation. At this point, the animations were slow and choppy. The second step was to fix the choppiness and speed, so we uploaded the videos on a CapCut. To fix the speed, we clicked the Edit button and then the Speed button, which allowed us to choose what kind of duration and to, like, fix it to however, what kind of speed we wanted it to. The third step after fixing the speed was to crop the video to only include the animation. This overall helped create a feeling of, like, a finished feeling to the look or to the project.
My favorite part about the learning experience was being able to use stop-motion for the first time. I never knew how it was done until Mr. Singh taught me how to.
One of my favorite parts was tracing out my ideas and using the light below the note cards to make the small changes to each image.
So these are our final product videos of the actual animations. I don't really know how to... The which one?
Just the next one.
Oh, okay.
I hope you enjoyed some of the stop-motion videos the eighth graders made. My name is Ava, and I'm going to tell you the process behind how the first graders used the pictures to tell the stories. For the first goal, the students watched all the stop-motion videos and picked the one they wanted to write about the most. For the second goal, they picked three images, image frames, in the Seesaw activity to describe the beginning, middle, and end of the story. And for the third goal, they used the voice-over tool on Seesaw to retell each part of the story. And they worked really hard to read with fluency and expression.
I'm going to tell you a little about how students can use Seesaw digitally to show their learning. The eighth-grade video was picked was included in the Seesaw activity. Students could watch the video as many times as they wanted to gain inspiration for the story. The first graders voiceover the three images to create their own version of the story-making, making sure to explain the beginning, middle, and end of the story. The work published on Seesaw was automatically shared to the families who are connected on the Seesaw Family App.
This is my sister Violet. She is a first grader at Central School, and she is going to share her favorite part of this project.
This is... My favorite part was writing my story. I liked to combine all the parts of the story. I even got to use my sister's movie to write my story.
Here's some of the first grade's final products.
One day, Tyler was mixing flour, sugar, and chocolate chips to make cookies. Next, Tyler put the cookies on a pan. After a while, what Tyler, he checked on them, and then they were done. Finally, he ate them. First, others were dressed in Halloween costumes by the window. Next, others saw a fifty-pound squirrel. Then others came back to guard them. Last, he went out another window and found a squirrel in the back door, and the squirrel got away. Then the squirrels flew into the house. Then the eggs, eggs, and food. They started to fly around their house. It all began on a Sunday, because a moon gathering was beginning in the park. Then he woke up and flew away. Last, he made a friend. He felt happy, and he threw a raincoat for his friend. Fourth, Jack fled in the field. Next, Jack let go of his kite. Finally, Jack let his kite go and never came back. There was a kid named Max, and he grew... He was in the wet dirt. Then he grew more. It rained on Max. Next, the sun came out. Max was full. As Max was happy because he was the dog.
Make sure to come back on May 5th, 2022, to check out the Howser exposition. Thank you for listening. And do you have any questions for us?
So how many...
Oh, go ahead, Marza, go ahead.
How many of those cards did you have to draw to get the primary second quiz?
I think it was around...
It was about, like, sixty?
Sixty? Yeah. Wow.
I've always been impressed with artists' patience with this type of reproduction, because I don't think I am. I've got everything you've got to do.
Yeah.
So it's pretty... Those drawings are awesome, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was this the first time you all used that?
Yeah, for me, it was.
Do you think you'll do it again?
Probably in the future, yeah.
Yeah? It's very cool.
Thank you.
It reminds me of, like, a, you know, much more modern version of the flip book.
Yeah.
And I was the one who could never get through three pages of that, so I'm very impressed. Did you all get to hear the story a first grader attached to yours?
Yeah.
No, not everybody did?
Yeah.
The trimester ended, then, right as those kids went to a different encore class.
Yeah.
And started to track them.
Right.
But all of those will be attached to QR codes and be published at the art show, too.
Oh, fantastic.
The art will be published with the first graders who've worked on it.
Well, that's really neat. I think that's such a great idea, to be able to take eighth graders' work and blend it into a first-grade lesson. I think that's fantastic. Especially the sisters who got to do it.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Or...
Wesley asked my question.
Yeah. Thank you all so much for coming. It's very exciting. You are the first students who've presented at a board meeting in over two years, so we're really excited to see your faces and welcome everybody back.
And I realize Mr. Singh is also in the back room, our art teacher at Howser, so thank you for facilitating this group of students and Sarah Hickey for making the eighth-grade, first-grade connection, so... And for the students for making it all really happen. Appreciate it. It's great.
Yeah, thank you.
I have one other item, then, or actually, a couple other items, but also acknowledging adults in the room. So Jim Colombo is in the room, our Howser band director, and many of you know him and have seen how his students perform. Riverside District 96 was awarded one of the Best Communities for Music Education Award, and I know it's something that the music department, but all of District 96 is very, very proud of and wanted to share all that with the board and with the community at large. And I know our principals have shared that out. I think it's been on Twitter and some of our social media, but also our principals have shared. So, anyway, very significant accomplishment, and I'm proud to have our wonderful music department.
Yes. Curious, is that something that you apply for, or is that something you get recognized for externally?
Yeah, it's something we apply for, so it's... So it's something we apply for, and it's based off of criteria. Some of the stuff off the top of my head, a number of music teachers involved, students involved in all the programs, band, orchestra, choir, even general music, community support, district support, board support. So it's not just something that is, we take pride in, it's something that you should take pride in for your support for us, the community should be proud of, because they're, you guys are the ones that really this award is for. We're just the facilitators. More specifically, Brad is the facilitator who filled out all the paperwork. Well, I just pointed at him. Yeah, so thanks.
Your emails, too, have been very comprehensive. There's a lot of steps that you've got to go through, a lot of boxes.
There's a lot of boxes. There's a lot of boxes to check off, and we're one of, I think, 22 districts in the state that got, that received this award out of hundreds that applied and even nationwide, too, so...
That's not a lot.
It's not, yeah. It's very small, very small selection, so, yeah. So, thanks.
Congrats.
Thank you. It's exciting to have positive news to share. The other thing we have coming up is the West Suburban Consortium for Academic Excellence will be hosting a student art fair on Saturday, April 30th. I believe it starts at 10 o'clock and goes till 4 o'clock. It's at the Cheney Mansion in Oak Park. For those of you that have been there, you should come again. And for those of you that haven't been, it's, hopefully, it's a lovely day. I think one year maybe it did snow on that last weekend in April years ago, but, anyway, it really is. It's a very professional-feeling art show. The students just have wonderful work displayed, and it's a lovely setting, and hopefully it'll be nice weather, and this is something that was not happening during COVID. So I'm excited to welcome it back and want to share information about that with all of you and with the community. We also have our Howser graduation scheduled for May 31st and wanted to remind all of you about that. We're also planning our traditional graduation at Riverside Brookfield High School indoors in the fieldhouse there at 7:00 PM. And I know we've had a year of, at all, virtual graduation and then kind of a modified hybrid style graduation last year, so, you know, looking forward to what, again, goes back to kind of a pre-pandemic formal graduation ceremony for our current eighth-grade students. The other thing I have for everybody, as I do share, it's kind of nice to talk about the non-COVID items, but COVID is still part of our world in some degree. And so, as you know, we've been tracking our student vaccination rates, and we've also been tracking the saliva screening participation overall and then the COVID dashboard in terms of number of cases each week. That information's all available on our website, but I know the board has taken a particular interest in looking at these specific items month to month. As I look at the vaccination data, there's maybe a slight uptick, not much change in the vaccination rate. I think overall, our vaccination rate is pretty good for a community of students. The saliva screening participation is interesting. I know one of the board members had asked me about sort of understanding the variability about the number of families that have not opted out, so therefore opted into the saliva testing, and then sometimes the overall participation number being less than that. And so I just remind everybody that if you've had COVID in the past 90 days, you don't do the saliva testing. If you're absent from school on that day, there's not really a makeup process, you don't participate. There are some children that try and still aren't able to produce enough of a sample for it to be counted. So there's now a number of variables that we kind of, you know, we certainly pay attention to, but this idea, I think Pam described it to me as kind of a moving target, right? It's been sort of hard to exactly capitalize on the number of children each week. I asked, and Pam, and worked with our lead nurse to kind of take one snapshot of a week and just to look at that. There is variability. I think the question for the board is, you know, kind of with the remaining six weeks of school, what more would you want us to capture? It is, the number varies, you know, sort of week to week and day to day for all those factors that I just pointed out. I do like that we continue to offer it as a service to our students and to our staff who just kind of want to do it to feel safer, to be safer, this idea of keeping COVID out of our schools, presymptomatic or asymptomatic cases in particular, we pick up on saliva testing, because if you're symptomatic, you shouldn't be in school anyway. So, again, it's been a really valuable service, you know, appreciate all that S.H.I.E.L.D. has been doing. I think S.H.I.E.L.D. is also, like, we do not know if this service will be offered next year or not. You know, it's part of the sort of federal COVID funding, and I think that all has yet to be determined, so we just don't know. But any questions about that, or just comments about the future, or comments about the information that you're able to review as a Board of Education?
No questions. I mean, I'd love to see it, too, but, like, to what you said, S.H.I.E.L.D. has to provide it, because we don't track all the testing being done and all that kind of stuff. So I'm fine with what we have. I think it gives us a good enough picture. It's directionally correct, and we always use it at R.I. work. It's good enough to make decisions off of or kind of understand what's going on. So with only six, what, I don't know, six weeks left, roughly, something like that, I don't, I don't think S.H.I.E.L.D.'s going to give it to you even if we ask, but with only six weeks left, I don't know how relevant it's really going to be.
And we can dig in, so there's a, it's the system where the results come to us, so the nurses can actually go in, but it's a, it's another later layer of data analysis, right? So it's the data that S.H.I.E.L.D. sends back to us, because they're really sending us back the positive case count, too. So there is a feedback loop, but it's, again, going back into the system and then figuring out why some students haven't participated. And, again, our clear understanding, as we looked at, is, like, COVID inability to produce a sample. So, yeah.
I don't think knowing it is going to drive any change, and it's not going to change what's happening. Even if we do want to make a change off of it, it's not going to drive day-to-day behavior, so I just, I don't... I'd love to have it. I love data. It's helpful, but I don't think it's going to do us much good, so I don't need it for any particular reason. This is my opinion.
Yeah, I feel the same way. I'm more curious to hear, like, for next school year, like, when S.H.I.E.L.D. is, when those decisions are being made, because even if the participation rate goes down, I still think it's a really helpful tool. So if COVID is still around, which I'm sure it will be, it would be a great tool to employ, but, so I'm eager to hear that news, but...
Yeah, and I'll keep you updated as soon as I hear anything. So that's it, Lynda, for the superintendent's report.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. Will the board secretary read the agenda?
Yes. So tonight's consent agenda consists of meetings from our previous minutes of March 2nd, 2022 Committee of the Whole, March 16th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting, March 16th, 2022 Closed Session Meeting, the Personnel Report as presented, the Payables Pre-List from March 31st, 2022, and April 20th, 2022, and the Independent Consultant Strategic Plan Leaving the Plan, which is one of the, one of the people we were working with at CEC left, and we, I guess, they got approval to work with us as a contracted employee, not directly an employee of CEC, just to continue that relationship. And that's it.
All right. Is there anything that anybody would like to take off the consent agenda?
No.
No? Then is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
You got that? Kathy, can you call the role?
No, I just...
Oh, any discussion?
One thing is, and goes back to what Wesley said, is with Arlena from, formerly from CEC, it's great that she's able to continue working with us. It's great that her rate comes in a little less. I think that's, there's a bonus on both of those items, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for finding a way to make that continue to work.
Yeah. Otherwise, we'd have our third person throughout the process.
Right.
Yeah. No, continuity, I think, with the strategic plan is important.
Yeah. I agree.
That was it.
All right. Any other comments? Kathy, can you call the role?
Okay. Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Bersadi?
Aye.
Mr. Mearhead?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Here, or, no, not here.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
I think our audio's been challenging already, right, Dan?
Sorry, Dan. Next...
I can just barely hear you guys. Like, sorry.
Should we speak louder? Does that help? He's like, no. He said, no.
I'm actually, I'm going to leave and come back to try computer audio again.
Okay.
Okay. I'll be right back. All right.
We'll keep moving forward?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the approval of administration contracts. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the administrators' contracts as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we have a summary? And I'm putting Jim on the spot. Is there a final...
I think Wesley's going to provide a summary.
Getting ahead of me, man.
Yeah. Wesley, as Personnel Committee, will provide a summary.
Yeah, so this is fairly straightforward, again, this year. So there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 contracts, administrator contracts, not including the superintendents. This is basically all of the direct reports of the superintendent. We decided on a 3.33% raise this year, which is in alignment with the recent REC contract that we just approved. As far as, like, aggregate, all-in, total compensation netting out to about roughly 3.33. And one person, Pam Shaw, we did elect to go with a 4.5% increase, which is really, I guess, the core of it is just a huge thank you for everything you've done for the district over the last, what is it, 12 or 12 years, 15 years, or something like that, that you've been here and...
He's like...
But just immense, like, we've heard positive things throughout the community, various board members coming on and off the board, just for where we at and where we are and transitioning to where we're going. We'd love to give you the gold Rolex, you know, the corporate gold Rolex, but we don't have that kind of funds, so we went with an extra, not even 1% increase. So hopefully, the recognition will do you some good, but we really appreciate everything you've done for the district.
Is there any other discussion? No? All right. Kathy, will you call the role?
Okay. Mr. Bersadi?
Aye.
Mr. Mearhead?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Moving on, Riverside Education Council, is there anyone here from the REC? It does not look like it, so we'll keep moving. Next is board member comments. Do any board members have any comments to share?
It's hard to believe there's only six weeks left in this year.
Yeah.
We're not going there, not thinking about it.
I'm looking forward to the recognition event. I'm glad to see with the invitation that came out, inviting the other two previous years and just trying to bring everybody that should have had recognition to this, that can get, can now get recognition, actually see people in person, so that's really good to see that back on the calendar.
And actually, Donna got several notes, letters, emails from people from the prior year, several saying that unfortunately, they couldn't make it, but they were so pleased to be invited. So even if they're not there, they really do appreciate that they went out during an unusual time, they retired during, during the pandemic, so...
Hopefully, it'll be well-intended.
Yeah.
That's always fun. It's always fun to get together, so I'm looking forward to it. And I actually got to go to the Ames Science Fair a couple of weeks ago, which was pretty fun, so watching all the kids come up with their ideas of science projects and present them out to the judges. Mr. D, the music teacher there, had some science of music where he was talking about, what do they call, tuning forks, and like, how a tuning fork actually works. And he had an experiment where he was trying to break a glass with a speaker. It didn't quite work, but, so then he was, like, talking with the kids about what he could have done differently, maybe he needed another speaker or something. And there's another really cool one they did with the speakers set this way so that they were, you know, blowing out, and two, two-liter bottles without the caps on them facing this way, or I guess this way. And when he turned the speakers on, I think how he explained it was the vibrations inside, the speakers caused vibrations of the airwaves inside the bottles, and they need to, they expand, and the only place they can expand is to go out the tube, and so as it goes this way, it propels it, and it actually started spinning around. I thought that was pretty cool.
Neat.
Feels like kind of common sense. When I thought about it, I was like, oh, that's really neat. I wouldn't have thought about doing that. And then I know the robotics club from Howser came over to do something, and I didn't, I didn't get to see what they did exactly, but I know all the kids were talking about it, so it was kind of cool. Again, just to, like, see how Howser are coming over and interacting with the elementary schools and stuff like that. and stuff like that. So it was a pretty big hit. I think everybody was just, again, just excited to be in the same place, like together doing stuff, but it was, it was a pretty big hit.
Any other comments? Nope. All right, we'll move on to committee reports. Up first, we'll throw it back to Wesley for the Personnel Committee.
I don't really have much else. Martha and I are actually meeting next week to talk about some upcoming things. There's really nothing major at this point, I think, on the docket. Couple of small things, little personnel things throughout the district to discuss.
And I would say the board went out of the, you know, approved all the new positions. So now we're working on filling those positions.
Yeah, I think, well, maybe, maybe I could say the one big thing, which is a very long-term thing, is just trying to look at our compensation model, speaking of personnel contracts and merit increases and stuff like that, trying to find a more consistent process. But that'll probably take a while to work through, but it's something Martha and I are going to try to chip away at before contracts come out or before this time next year. Yeah.
All right. Moving on to Facilities Committee?
Nothing of note. We are meeting beginning of May.
Yeah, beginning of May.
Beginning of May, I believe it's Monday morning at eight. And then we have a new bu, new business item as well. So.
All right. Policy Committee, I know Stephanie's not here. I don't know if there's anything to report there.
Nothing, nothing new. Yeah.
All right. Education Committee. Just at the, we met a few weeks ago. I don't remember, time is a blur at the moment. We met a few weeks ago. And the next Committee of the Whole Meeting will be, Angela will be presenting the state report card.
And math curriculum.
And the math curriculum updates for the, from the piloting that's going on.
At the Cal meeting, next Cal meeting.
The next, yeah.
The May one?
Yes, at the May Committee of the Whole Meeting, yes. And that's all I have to update. Finance Committee?
Really nothing to report. I know we're starting to work on the budgets, but for next year, but nothing to report right now.
Okay. This is going fast. Oh, it just jinxed us. Moving on to old business, which appears there is none. So that's exciting. So new business. The first item on the agenda is a budget amendment for FY '22. Looks like Jim's going to come up and give us some information.
I think the memo might explain it, but we, whenever there's a significant change in a budget, ESPE wants us to adopt a new one, an amended one. So we've done this about this time last year. The big change from the budget that we approved last July to now is the ESSRS money, which was, they, they want the full amount in there. So it changed by a million dollars, and that kind of triggered the need to do this amendment.
So what exactly is that amending? Just putting the ESSRS money directly into the budget?
Yes, it's showing that much more revenue and expenditure.
Gotcha, okay.
On both sides, so it's balanced.
Are there any other questions? Seems pretty straightforward. And we'll be voting on that at the next meeting?
Yeah, we'll have a hearing just like we did for the budget.
Right, okay. All right, so moving on. The next item is the Hauser Auditorium MOU.
This is an MOU for the auditorium, kind of self-explanatory, but the Hauser Auditorium needs some work, and this includes the improvements in both the better, or the, excuse me, the good and better.
Better and best.
Elements that were identified in the study. And the goal is to get this to construction at the beginning of 2023, but also to make sure that we capture all of the grant money from the State of Illinois. Some of that capture may be through early acquisition of some of the proposed equipment, but we will, as we move forward, that'll be developed.
So quick, just so I understand, so the, the good, better, best section, are we aiming to do all of those pieces? Or are we aiming, or those are just three different?
Those were levels of improvement.
Right.
So good was kind of a minimum, because they know the electric, the electrical system is severely undersized and just it's past its useful life, as well as a lot of the equipment. And then better brought in, I think, I don't remember offhand, but I think some lighting improvements and getting us past just baseline. And best can come later if we so choose.
Okay, so this MOU is talking about the good and better portions of the survey?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. It's funny how it screams good, better, best. I was like, give me that. I don't know why that was confusing me.
What it adds is better brings us some more, some better audio visual, which includes loudspeaker system replacement, better, the permanent projection system, and then all of the good, good items that I mentioned that are the baseline. And then it also includes a little bit of, a little bit of additional architectural work. Best, later on, if we went that direction, would include a lot more AV, a lot more AV.
So we haven't made the decision if we're going to go to best at all yet?
No, and we, the point of this was that we don't need to.
Okay.
Better, or sorry, best can be installed with all the other stuff already there.
So is best in addition to, or is it replacing?
No, it's in addition to.
It's in addition to.
I'm describing it very poorly.
No, no, no. I, I'm following you.
Best is.
Well, like if it's, if it's, if it's speakers and stuff like that, do we buy better speakers? And then to get best speakers, we have to throw away the better ones and then buy the better?
No, no.
It's in addition to, be putting more speakers or?
Because best adds things like wireless microphone system upgrades, so.
Yeah, so that's not something, so we can add on to it later.
ADA assistive listening, so the, the ears.
Look at it as like a foundation, just building on each foundation.
Yeah. Not upgrading the speakers to better speakers, but it's adding new features to things.
Correct. Nothing gets thrown away.
Yep, yep. But it looks like the difference between good and better, we would need to go with either good or better? Because it says loudspeaker replacement, or would that loudspeaker replacement be, is that not in?
That's not in good.
That's not in good. Okay, so this is all building upon it.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, okay.
It's adding, you build a base, and then you can add more on top of it, like Dave described.
But with the architectural stuff, can you do the architectural stuff if we don't do that in the first place? Is that something you can easily do?
No, the architectural stuff is all driven by ADA requirements. It's essentially in for a penny, in for a pound. Once you touch something, you have to, once you start working there, you have to bring it up to current standards. So that, that's why best, or sorry, that's why good has so much architectural work.
So better, for, so for architectural, better is literally just painting?
It's, yes, additional painting.
Okay, fair.
I'm wondering, are there any side benefits to this project that, you know, things that we would have to do anyway or anything? I, I guess there's some architectural benefits in terms of ADA compliance, but is there anything in terms of the wiring that would help Hauser in general or would allow other parts of the school to do something that they can't presently?
I don't believe so.
Makes any sense?
I don't believe so, Dan, because it, it is really all about what's going on in and around that room. Because it's all house lights and stage lights and equipment that is specific to the auditorium.
And I guess if this project weren't done, we, we lose that ability entirely, or we kind of continue to limp along as we are now?
Sorry, I could explain more. I'm missing something.
Well, I'm just wondering, I mean, this, this is a large amount of money, 1.3 million. I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around the benefits of it. I'm, I'm wondering if, if we weren't to do this, this project, I mean, what are the ramifications of that other than us losing the grant?
The grant, I, the grant is kind of like a coupon. You should never be driven by a grant. The issue is, is that the equipment is on its last legs. They're having issues with finding replacement elements to it. A lot of the lighting and the wiring is certainly out of date. We know that it's a little dark in there. I.
And you know, and I, and I can speak to it from like personal perspective, because I've actually, my daughter's been on the theater. The equipment is, they, they're, they're putting Band-Aids on top of Band-Aids to get things to work. So, I mean, it's time to replace it.
That's what we're hearing initially, is like things would glitch out in the middle of the musical. And that's what started even several years ago.
I've experienced it myself. I definitely am aware.
Yeah.
And that's been going on for years.
And just, and new microphones don't do it. It's really, there's, there's infrastructure problems is what we figured out, which is why it ends up having a, I think a larger price tag than we first were anticipating.
There's so much electrical in here, and you can, if you look at, well, page 301 on my copy, but the electrical and lighting is 650,000 alone. It's, a lot of replacing of old stuff is probably a good, but slightly unprofessional summary. I mean, I had sticker shock as well on this, but when we read the reports, it makes sense. They're, they're not, they're not trying to, we're not trying to buy a Cadillac here, certainly.
For as much money as it is, it's kind of disappointing we're not getting one. Or maybe even a Tesla.
Do we know if any of that's been replaced since it was, like, how old is the current equipment? If we don't know, it's not a big deal. I was just curious. Like, is it?
I have not seen the term cold cathode lighting for a long time. I can't, honestly, a lot of this looks very similar to when I watched Little Symphony a certain number of years ago.
Yeah, no, it's, I mean, it's.
I know it's been a discussion item since I've been here, that, that there were problems that were, had been noticed. And it's just been an issue of how extensive are the, the needs.
It does seem like a lot, but honestly, I mean, AV equipment is not cheap.
Yeah.
Even the cheap stuff's not cheap. Even the inexpensive stuff is not inexpensive if you're to say it that way, but.
And I feel like that, that space is well utilized. I know that.
I mean, I perceive it to be more use, to be more useful too, with those upgrades.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, you know, the band, music orchestra choir plays, musicals.
Right.
But I know even for all district events, we've used it, and
Right.
there is something that's just a little bit unpleasant about the space for, yeah.
And we will be approving this at the, or voting on this on the, at the next meeting?
Should we choose to do so? Yes.
Yes, that's, I changed my wording. Yes, we will be voting on it next meeting. Is there any other conversation about this topic?
I, I guess I, I would, would wonder if, when, when we're, when this is coming to a vote, if we can see how this changes financial projections again. I know we've seen similar things. Jim's been able to produce similar reports on that or graphs. Just, I, I guess I do start to wonder, I, I know we, we had a surplus, but I do wonder about how much we're, we're spending into it and how much is remaining for other projects we've considered as well.
I'll, I'll take that to Jim.
It's a valid point, Dan. And I, speaking slightly beyond this discussion, I think we are steadily getting to a point where we are going to be at a maintain what we have rather than significant upgrades.
I mean, and that's, I guess, sort of the way I look at it, is like, I look at this, even though this isn't a window or a roof, this is stuff that we have to maintain going forward. If we decide to, if we want to have an auditorium, we need to maintain that auditorium. And it's going to cost unfortunately more than we probably generally expect. And so I just look at this as just, this is regular maintenance that we have to do.
I definitely can appreciate that. I guess, I know that there's been, been talk and thought of, and this has nothing to do with this conversation, this project in particular, but in future projects, there's, there's been some thought to the idea that we could take, the district could take on debt again. But just, just to, I, I guess I am starting to be weary in terms of interest rates going up. And I, I do wonder in, in terms of, do we get to a point where we might have to weigh the cost benefits of, of other projects as well?
No, I mean, I can understand you, I can, I see what you're talking about. But based on the projections, even just from recollection, even this wasn't budgeted, which I have to go back to see if it was, I mean, we are still in a good, good shape financially to do it. I mean, I guess, Jim, Jimmy, you're here. Can you, can you tell, tell us in your projections, did you, this Hauser, the Hauser Auditorium, have you budgeted? I don't remember recall from the projections. It just was part of your projections.
We, we budgeted 1.1 million every year for repairs. So this one might be a little bit more than years worth.
Okay.
The thing, you did have something in there for this. I don't think it was this high, but I don't remember what the number was, but there was a couple hundred thousand.
A hundred, because I knew we had to get, spend that to keep to 50.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we, we can take a look at it, Dan.
Like, some of this stuff is safety issues too. I mean, you're talking about the lighting, it's dark. I'm just looking at this one page about fire retardant curtains and, you know, egress. And I mean, some of this is just liability concerns, fire concerns, things like that. So, yeah, how much do we spend on it? I don't know. But like, some of this stuff is just, we got to maintain it and upgrade it for various reasons.
Well, well understood. And again, yeah, my, my kids have been in, in theater too and have benefited from it. So I definitely can appreciate that.
But I, I don't think we plugged in a million.
No, I don't.
Definitely wasn't that high, so.
Nah, I want to say half a million, but I.
Was it that high? I was thinking three or four, but it could be five.
I'm in danger of not remembering properly, so
We'll figure it out.
You're not allowed to quote that number from me.
If it doesn't come from Jim, I don't listen. Or Dave, or Dave.
I'm good. No further questions.
Any further discussion? All right, well, that's it. Is there any public comment? No public comment. I'll go ahead and read the future meeting date. So next meeting is May 4th, 2022, Committee of the Whole Meeting, 7 o'clock PM at Blithe Park School, which we haven't been to in a while. Following that is May 18th, 2022, Regular Business Meeting, 7 PM here at Hauser. And then June 1st, 2022, Committee of the Whole Meeting, 7 PM in the multipurpose room at Central School. Oh, that, that's the new multipurpose room. Oh, that's exciting. And then June 15th, 2022, the Regular Business Meeting, 7 PM here again at Hauser. We are also going back into closed session with no action after. So is there a motion, trying to find the language, to enter into closed session for the purpose of discussing collective negotiating matters or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees? I believe that's the only item.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Give it to Dan.
Give it to Dan. He never gets to say it, so.
I never get to do that anymore.
You got this one, Dan.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, who seconded?
I seconded.
Oh, everybody raises their hand.
It's Dave's. Dave was closer. You heard him first.
I did not.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Merhead?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes and you're in closed session.
All right. And just to reiterate, there'll be no action, I do.